The Madras City Council meeting to order at 5:30. Councillor Solis, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody will join me in prayer. Our dearly Father, as we bow before thee, we are grateful for the freedoms that we have and the former government that we celebrate and practice. We ask thee to watch over us this evening and guide our decisions that we may do so in the best respect of our community and with wisdom. These things we pray in Jesus's name, amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Lapine.
Present.
Councillor Holcomb.
Present.
Councillor Sebold.
Present.
Councillor Solis.
Present.
Councillor Yoder.
Present.
Councillor Walker.
Present.
And I do not believe we have Councillor Spencer on Zoom. She has an excused absence.
She does. Thank you.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there any changes or additions to the regular agenda?
We have an amended agenda, correct?
Yes, Mayor, you have an amended agenda in front of you. You can list the items off that we've added.
The item's under number seven, which is the appointment of the interim city administrator, and number eight as the co-detective update. I will add or point out that number six, the code enforcement services discussion with Chief Blake from Jefferson County Fire and EMS, may get pushed back in that sequence depending on if he makes it in from his meeting with his board. Any other discussion on that? Can I entertain a emotion?
I move that we accept the agenda with the amendment stated.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, can I entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Did you catch that second, Lisa? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, it passed unanimous, thank you. Do we have anyone here for public comments? None here for public comments? Anybody on Zoom for public comments? None, okay. We'll move forward to visitor presentation. Number one is Tomy City.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. My name's Jeff Hurd. I live at 2055 Southeast Dry Gold Drive here in Madras. Yep.
Okay, Austin Cooper. I live at 605 Southeast Kincaid, Madras, Oregon.
And we're part of the Tomy City Board. That's for the sister city, for the city of Madras. And we have a presentation for you guys tonight to just kind of show you what that is, but just to kind of give you a brief overview is that the sister city organization is basically a match between two cities and there's it's a big, big program. And Madras's city that they're matched with is Tomy City in Japan. And we've been part of that. I think Floyd Cortain started it back in yeah, it was in the 90s. And so we, Madras has been part, had that relationship with Tomy City for since back then. And the way, kind of the purpose of the program is, is to kind of share, you know, like-minded culture with one another of the tapes, the types of the cities they are. So what, what it's been in the past is students or dignitaries from Tomy City would come over to Madras and visit us, and likewise, we would send folks over there. It was just a chance to get to, get to explore each other's cultures and see how we were like-minded and whatnot. And so back in, gosh, I want to say 2014 or 15 or 16, I can't remember the year. Floyd wanted to step back from running the Tomy City organization and he asked me to kind of, if I would take over. And so since then, I've been on the board. My wife's on the board. Michelle is on the board. We've always had the mayor as a representative on the board. Prior to Mike, it was Mr. Latyby, and then Austin's on the board and we have a couple others. And basically, what we do is we have it in your budget every year and to put together a group of high school kids to go over and visit Tomy City. We haven't done it in several years because of COVID. COVID shut us down. So that's why you haven't heard a lot about it, but we're trying to get the program up and going again. And so with that, I'll just kind of, there's a video, Charo, I think. Yep, if you could run it, I'd appreciate it. Austin, the great cinematographer, put it together.
In 1956, President Dwight D. Eisenhower envisioned a way for US cities to create formal partnerships with foreign cities. Municipality to municipality, cities could exchange information and ideas in order to develop friendships and deepen cultural understanding. This vision sparked the creation of Sister Cities International, which today includes more than 500 US cities with relationships in 145 countries, a total of some 2,000 municipal partnerships. Each year, thousands of citizen diplomats, young and old, represent the United States around the world, promoting democracy and understanding. The mission of Sister Cities International is to promote peace through mutual respect, understanding and cooperation. One individual, one community at a time. It is a nonprofit citizen diplomacy network that creates and strengthens partnerships between the US and international communities. The Sister Cities program is designed as a means for cultural exchange. Sister city relationships begin for a variety of reasons. Generally, sister city partnerships share similar demographics and town size. Partnerships may arise from business connections, travel, similar industries or shared history. Madras's relationship with Tomy City arose from sharing similar economic interests and population size. Tomy is a regional commercial center. Notable agricultural products include rice, walnuts and grapes. Madras and Tomy have been partnered with the Sister City program for close to 30 years now. In that time, groups of students from both nations have gotten the opportunity to visit one another. Students stay in host homes while they travel to the hosting nation. This is a key component of the exchange experience as it gives students and chaperones a better understanding of the cultures and everyday life of a place. While in Madras, Tomy City students have the opportunity to visit local area attractions. They also spend time visiting classes at the high school and tour Madras City Hall. These visits from Tomy have typically taken place in the spring. Students from Madras get the opportunity to meet their counterparts in person for the first time during the spring visit. Once summer kicks off, it will then be their turn to visit Tomy. Since 2017, high school students have had the opportunity to represent Madras abroad in Tomy City. The experiences and memories these students make will last a lifetime. The ability to see and know cultures other than our own breeds understanding and world unity. This cannot easily be taught in a classroom. Lifelong friendships are forged and not forgotten. As our world continues to engage in pointless wars and conflict, Sister City exchange programs continue to forge global respect, unity and understanding. In President Abraham Lincoln's first inaugural address, he spoke of these things. "We are not enemies, but friends. We must not be enemies. Though passion may have strained, it must not break our bonds of affection. The mystic chords of memory will swell when again touched, as surely they will be by the better angels of our nature."
That's it? So, yeah, do you have anything you want to say, Austin?
I just think that what our goal was in coming today and taking up your time, I know that a lot of council members might not be super aware of our program. And again, with COVID and also with Japan hosting the Olympics when they did, we've, the program's been on pause, but I think it's a worthwhile program. It's something that we're very interested and invested in continuing here in our community. So I don't know if you guys have any questions, but I think the main point of tonight was just to kind of say hi, let you know who, who we are and give you kind of an idea of what the program is and what the goals are for the program. So we're hoping to go back and have students back here maybe as soon as next year, so.
I, I think it's great personally. I fully support it. I was just curious, do you have a typical time of year that you like to send students, like a certain month, strategically?
Yes, so the students that visit us, they typically visit around like our spring break. And then we have sent students traditionally right after graduation. It works out that way because that's when Tomy has their summer break. So we send our students over when they're, when they're doing their break. Jeff can attest to this more because he's, he's been there, he's been on the trip and stuff. But the Japanese people are very structured and they like everything to be perfect when we come and visit them and stuff. So I think in their minds, having us when they're on their spring break, they can devote more time and attention to, to us as visitors and.
Yeah, they plan everything down to the minute. Their itinerary doesn't say nine o'clock, it says 8:43.
I love it, actually. That's awesome.
Must be a really big shock when their students come here then. Our itineraries, I assume, would be nothing like that.
Yeah, our itineraries are not. It's pretty much, we, we have a pretty good plan in place, but you know, 10, 15 minutes one way or the other, you know? That's about how it goes, so.
I think it's interesting too, just the things, I mean, we're used to our community, we're used to being here, but there was a group that came a couple of years ago and they absolutely loved that alpaca farm, like outside of Terrebonne. And it's something, you know, we started driving, oh, there's alpacas and stuff, but that was like their favorite thing. They're like, the alpaca farm, like, this is amazing. And it's like, yeah. They're cute, but anyhow, that's again why it's important. It's, we get so used to our own perspective on the world and our community and the things that open our minds are often the things that we overlook in our own homes.
I'm, I'm just curious, is it maybe in the weeds, but so when we send people there, they send people here, people stay in hotels? Is that right? Or with, with sponsors typically?
Typically sponsors. We'll reach out to just families who are willing to host. It's only about a week that they're here, willing to host a student and then a chaperone that comes with them. And it's never been an issue, you know, trying to find, people are more unhappy to, because it's kind of fun to learn new things, right? And so that's how I got on the program was through church. I was, actually, I think I read it in the paper. And I told my wife, I said, hey, this looks like fun, we could do this. And then, yeah, we've been doing it ever since, so.
When the Japanese students come here, they, one of the things with, with their host family is they prepare a meal, a traditional meal for, for you and your family. So you get, you get a cool meal out of it. And the students do are kept pretty busy, so yeah, you're hosting someone, but they're running around Central Oregon and visiting the schools for the day, they keep them, keep them busy. And then when we go there, we stay with host families for about half the trip. And then the second half of the trip is in Tokyo where.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we're in a, yeah, we're staying in a hotel when you go to Tokyo. So you get to, and it's a lot of fun. So when you go this, the first week and, and they, they treat you like royalty there. You know, I mean, you do, you stay with the host family and they have it packed, you know, for, for the time you're there. I mean, once you're up, you're moving, you, you have someplace they want you to be to see and and then once you get to Tokyo, you're kind of on your own. And you just get the chance to kind of explore the city and, you know, get on the subway and, and check everything out. And believe it or not, you know, when I went there, I was the one who went first. And the only reason why I went is because Floyd says, I don't want to go, Jeff, you want to go? And I'm like, well, sure, why not?
Ah, sounds like fun.
Yeah, and so when I went, I was kind of really nervous because when they said you get to Tokyo, they said you're on your own. And I go, okay, I have four high school kids I got to take care of in Tokyo. And surprisingly, it was one of the safest cities I've ever been in and people were friendly and it was easy to get around. And we had a lot of fun, so, yeah.
Well, this is just me thinking aloud, but once you guys do schedule something, I think it'd be fun to maybe have an event or do something from the city, have some sort of event to give them a proper welcoming so that they feel appreciated and honored. So I think we should absolutely do that personally.
And we typically do. We always try to have one day at some point in time that they come here, meet with the mayor, city council, whoever's available. Like even you saw in one of the videos, I think we had a, oh, the chuck wagon came down and served dinner so they could try a chuck wagon experience and we had everybody come, so, yeah.
Jeff, could you, the very last photo in the video was of the Tomy City Fire Department. And they, during COVID, can you tell them about that?
I can't remember it, but it was something about reaching out to our fire department.
Yeah, they reached out to our fire department and they actually made a financial donation to our local fire department here. So it's, it's, it's more than just the exchange program and in some ways, they've probably been a little bit better than we've been about just extending it beyond the exchange program piece. But that very last photo in the video is of their local fire department. And then it was during COVID, the banner at the bottom said, you know, take care of Madras and stuff. But yeah, this has been going on for, for 20, 30 years. Some of the relationships that have been built are, you know, lifelong. During the pandemic, we've done Zoom calls with Tomy City. And, you know, we'll sit down for an hour and talk about what we do for Christmas. You know, that's very interesting to them because they don't do Christmas the same way that we do here, really even at all in the traditional sense. So it's just back and forth, just learning about each other. And yeah, Jeff has, has made friends over there that still send him.
Oh, yeah, every, every, every Christmas, we send each other Christmas cards and, you know, notes and stuff that we still take. In fact, there's one family that pretty much we semi-adopted their children, you know, and said, oh, you're our kids too, you know, sort of thing. So yeah, you end up making relationships for that last, last forever. I mean, I, I still talk to them and their kids still, of, of another family still talk to us, you know, and yeah, it's a good thing.
Yeah, I know when Jamie went on her trip where she was a chaperone over there, one of the students that the Herds had hosted, she met up with them when they were in Tokyo and he, he helped, he helped show them, show them the ways, show them the cool spots and helped Jamie navigate Tokyo with her group, so.
Yep.
Anywho.
I love that we should reciprocate their generosity of spirit. And that's really cool that they donated during COVID. I, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Thank you for sharing that.
I was going to say that I've been on city council and been able to support that for many years. I'm glad to see it come back. Thank you.
All right, number one on the regular agenda, the VFW requests for fund spaghetti dinner fundraiser. Crystal?
Very much. So the Veterans of Foreign Wars requested additional resources this year for a dinner that they're going to put on. They were part of our originally community grant applicants, but when we asked the mayor if he wanted to bring this before council, he asked us to. And his suggestion was about $500. So we just need authorization from council to proceed if that's something you would like to do.
I'd be willing to support that personally.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that council would approve $500 for Madras VFW Veteran Appreciation Spaghetti Dinner.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous and I personally say thank you. Number two, notice of the scrivener error in resolution number 02-2023.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to ask Charo to bring up a different version because as I was reviewing tonight, I found that the totals weren't quite accurate and we had recently updated our accounting software. So the, all the links didn't tie. So I'm just going to ask, there we go. So I highlighted the totals. The only actual error in the, was $10 in the Transportation Operations Fund. But the total amounts in either the adopted budget or the revised budget column also have been updated since the links all work now. So I apologize for the error. It's important to bring it before the council in written and in verbal form. That's what local budget law requires. And so that's what I'm doing here this evening. I can answer any questions that you have.
We ready for a motion? All right, I make a motion that council acknowledge receipt of the error in resolution number 02-2023 and approve the modifications as proposed.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Next is the resolution number 03-2023, the Homeless Advisory Committee. Nick Snead is not here tonight. Discuss that, but this is kind of my pet project, so I'm going to bring this up. This resolution creates the committee to address the homeless issues we have, such as the public camping, the providing resources to those who need, need that. And what have you. This is a diverse committee made up of all the emergency or first responder agencies within our county, the public health, best care treatment and the faith-based network, legal advocate and those services that we have here in our city hall. Does anybody have any questions I can answer about regarding this?
Do you have buy-in from all the voting members that are being proposed?
I do. In fact, before I even got elected, I've already talked to Dr. Baker from the Health Department. Best Care is excited to get involved in this, so is the Faith-Based Network, they're all involved. The sheriff said he'd be happy to step into this, as well as Sergeant Webb, who knows a lot of these people that were in question. So yeah, there is buy-in.
I had a question. I see that you have listed one city councillor, one council member. Is that in addition to you as mayor or to?
I think that is me, unless somebody else wants to trump me on that.
Okay. The only thing I would ask is that we, you know, as this progresses, I'm 100% in support of it, just some regular feedback.
Well, of course.
I know we're all on boards and we don't necessarily report out frequently on them.
Actually, I'm going to say something about that later, but yes.
I move that council approve resolution number 03-2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Number four, the replacement of council Microsoft services. Are you taking that one, Crystal? Thank you.
So, council, you may realize that we have items before you that aren't actually requiring a vote per se. So our attempt is to get permission to proceed or to ask the council without a work session, that type of thing for, for discussion regarding the items before you. This is the first of those. And it, the Microsoft surfaces, the idea is that we would spend up to $20,000. The exact purchase of which device is still up in the air. Nick wants to bring back proposals on that. And then Councillor Sebold asks, well, what if we leased instead of purchased? So that still needs to be vetted out. This will require a budget resolution whenever we choose to proceed. So just know that that is kind of on par or on deck as well. So if you have any questions, I can relay those to Nick. But that's, that's the idea is that we could get permission to spend up to $20,000 to replace your surfaces.
So my opinion, after seeing what it might cost is, my, I've had my computer in and I got it back and it's working rather well. And it's easy to get to the council stuff, which was hard before. So Lisa must have done something or covenant. But at this point, I don't see being fiscally responsible sending, spending 20 grand just because I don't like this one. So it's like having a Ford and wishing you had a Chevy or something.
I would say that it's up to 20,000. I personally don't think it'll be anywhere near 20,000. It depends how much the laptops are. I guess it's a matter of prioritization. I personally think these surfaces are almost worthless. It takes me like eight minutes to log in and it's so unfunctional that I don't use it. If we can increase the efficiency of being able to use our issued tech to communicate, collaborate with staff, I think there'd be a lot of value there. I think it's a sunk cost that we should incur. So while I absolutely agree with being fiscally conservative and responsible, I think this is something so vital to our basic operation that it is worth the investment. That's where I would be.
I think I agree with both Gary and Mike simultaneously. I think that we need new devices. I'm not a fan of this. I don't like working with the surface, very small, very restricted. Up to $20,000 just to me seems like a stretch. I just purchased a $1,200 laptop for me, for myself personally, and I thought that was a lot. I think for the purposes of council, I could see us dealing with five or $600 laptops and it being functional. So I would think that 20,000 is a lot, maybe up to 10. But I don't know how everyone else feels.
Let me jump in here. I'm guessing, and I don't know if you can answer this, Crystal, I'm guessing the up to 20 is to just to give a really high ceiling to give us room to, to maneuver, that we're not actually going to spend 20 grand. Because yeah, I mean, you could get a decent laptop, six, seven, eight hundred bucks, a grand max, and there's six of us, so there, you know, we would need to get top of the line like gaming computers, which I don't think we want for three grand a pop, $3,300 and $33 to hit the 20,000. So I'm, I'm not viewing this as a 20 grand cost, I'm viewing this as a few thousand dollar cost personally.
Did you say you don't need a motion on this? So you just need consensus that we would like new devices? And then you guys will bring back to us quotes and an actual purchase? So we don't actually need to read this motion and give you guys authority to make a purchase?
We are not, the goal is not to purchase. The goal is to make sure that we have direction from the council on where you would like to go. And then Nick is going to bring back the choices.
Okay, perfect. I, I think we should move forward with it.
Well, I think it'd be wise to explore it anyway.
Yep.
But I was definitely getting a red flag at 20 grand.
So even at, let me, let me explain this one thing and, and that's great. 20 grand is high. And it's round because he asked me what I thought and I like round numbers, so that's the truth of that too. But there's, if every device that Covenant adds, they do charge an amount for their services as well. So if you had your $1,200 laptop plus $300, $350 for Covenant to do their part as well, so.
Let me ask you that, we're already paying for these six, so is it really going to be that big of a difference? Like, I mean, we've got these.
For a new device, every time a new device is installed. So it's not like there's a swap.
You're talking about a one-time? You're talking about a one-time installation fee or setup fee?
Yeah. Yes.
That seems very high, just candidly, $300 to set up a laptop. I'll do it for 290.
I'll add that to the notes. Okay, so what I've surmised is that we have permission to continue exploring. Nick will come back with options. We prefer around the $1,000 range per device, please.
We're not asking for apples, we're asking to be economically sound, but also a device that's not going to die in a year. It needs to be sustainable at the same time.
Fair.
I think also, you mentioned earlier, but looking into the leasing option too might defray, might cut some of that cost down, so we don't take the whole hit of the total cost on the front end. You know, maybe a two- or three-year lease, just worth gaming out, and then we swap up for new tech, and then we have a low barrier of entry to get to the new tech, that might help the balance sheet.
Thanks.
I would also add, maybe look into the tech that they give high schoolers. That stuff survives a high schooler, so it should be able to survive us.
Fair enough.
Next you'd be wanting what the sheriff's office carries, right?
Okay, thank you for the discussion, I appreciate the information.
Hoffman Park grant, our grant opportunity, Michelle?
Hello, council, so the Hoffman Park, we applied for this grant last year and were unsuccessful in obtaining that. The grant is right around the corner. There has been talk about moving forward, but with some of the things that come up recently, we weren't able to bring that to you and kind of get it in front of you for you to be able to see it. So I'm here tonight to see how you would like to proceed, if we should move forward with a grant application for the local government grant to potentially construct Hoffman Park, if we should pull back and maybe wait and do something next year, and maybe do something a little smaller that's, you know, a little easier on the, on our budgets. This grant is a 60/40 match grant. This is the last year we can use the land as match, which is 180,000. So if we do pause, we won't have that as match for next year. So that is one aspect in, in moving forward or not moving forward. So just wanting to get your feedback on what you think and how you would like to move forward with this park.
I had a couple of comments, I know that we've seen this before in the past. I don't see a restroom on this.
So this would be phase one of probably several, because the, at the end of the, I should have put in like what our full build-out would have looked like, there will be restrooms. So with this one, with the cost of the restroom, we would probably have to take out everything else and just put down grass. If we did, if we asked for a restroom in place of some of the other things.
Okay, and then my other question is, I know when we talked about this before, we talked about having a road right between two parks, where you've got a toddler area on one side, and you've got brother-sister on the youth-to-14-year-old soccer field on the other side. Have we figured out how to handle some sort of a crosswalk or something to minimize potential for problems?
Yeah, so I believe it's the number twos, so those are parking, that is parking spaces, so that was part of the idea, is to have those parking spaces as a buffer zone for part of that. And then, yes, we would have to do some type of, the full build-out also will have a trail that will hopefully help with that. But that is something we will definitely have to work towards as far as making sure there's safety and slowing traffic down, especially once subdivisions are built out further down, to make sure that we slow people down to a crawl going through that little section right there for parking.
Okay, and then my last question, is this going to be watered off of recycled septic water? I mean, where's the water coming from this?
This will be irrigated, probably like our other parks, it would be to use valley water. You can't irrigate a park with recycled water.
But you can a golf course?
Yep.
Is that because of the age of the?
No, it, a lot of it has to do, so the only reason we're able to do the golf course is because we, we water at night, and then it allows for the irrigation to, to soak in. With the parks, the grass may, if it maintains any grass, and kids put their fingers in their mouth, and they play on the equipment and things like that, that you don't do at a golf course, so that's part of the reason why.
That's what I meant by the age, expecting kids on this one compared to the golf course?
Michelle, I have a question, so the restrooms or your proposed restrooms, would there be one on either side of the street or just on one side?
I would like to think we would try to maybe get two in here. If not, we would probably put one somewhere closer to the street where it would be used by both sides. It will probably come down to budget, where we might put one on one side and then maybe, you know, I could see us going through several cycles of grants to try to, to build this out or just budget for it, to say, okay, we're going to do a restroom this year, and then place it strategically and maybe, and then the following year, maybe we could get one on the other end or something like that.
I think it's a good idea to maximize, you know, like you said, the land, you have an opportunity here to use that as a match that you won't have in following years. I just think we need to be very careful about grass that's going to already compromise a water table and making sure that we're strategic about maybe doing one side. I just want to be careful with what we're adding to our already lacking water table.
I agree, I was going to say the same thing, I hate leaving money on the table. And if, as you pointed out, we're, this is the last year we can do the land match, it seems penny-wise and dollar-foolish to me to let that drop off under some sort of other, although yes, we are trying to exercise fiscal restraint, we don't want to, we don't want to lose out on that. So my inclination would be to design in a way that we can maximize that.
So could I ask a question?
Ma'am.
So when we submit the grant, so we, the reason we brought this to council is because we have to submit the grant by April 1st. And so we have to have a resolution to proceed at the next meeting, so that's why we're here, so we thank you for the discussion. The, the question I have is, if we submit a design to the grant, do we have an ability to change it later? Or that's how it has to be built?
No, I, we should be able to change it later, this is just a concept, right? It's an idea of what we're moving towards. If council would like, I mean, we could totally look at it, I mean, this is a large, when we get done, it's six, six acres. We could look at a part where we leave it natural, maybe, and put it in, you know, to where it's not irrigated, right?
Dog park.
It could, we could make part of it a dog park where, and it's not watered, it is natural, it's, we don't really do much with it. It's just maintained, we would have to obviously do things to keep weeds and things like that down. So, you know, we, really, the sky's the limit, this is just a concept, and we needed to start somewhere, right? As far as where we're going to, how we're going to, I have to present something to the grant committee, I can't just say, we want to build a park.
Is it your number one biggest expense though in this park, the bathroom?
Not, well, this doesn't include the bathroom, so.
But in all phases, what's your big-ticket item?
Bathroom would be close. For this one, for getting it started, it's going to be like the irrigation and the grass. So if we did say, okay, we want to take a section of it and it's not going to be grass, that would help conserve some on, on the costs, I'll have to-
I guess, because I've worked with these grant committees before up at Juniper Hills, getting a bathroom was a big, because it's an open space and you're servicing the public.
Right.
The bathroom was the big plug for us getting the money because of what we were providing for that open space, and then you can do everything else in smaller terms. So I'm 100% in support of that, I'm just asking if maybe we need to shift at some point, if CRX or somebody even has the unit available right now.
Yeah, there's, there is, there's that, also that aspect, too. And, yeah, we'd have to look into it. The hard part would be shifting gears right now because we would have like two weeks to try to get numbers together and, and change a budget. But we could look at it and see if maybe we can reduce some of the grass areas and some of the things and trade it for a restroom, potentially, maybe, or even if it's a smaller restroom.
Yeah, I'm just in support of making sure that we don't have another park without a bathroom.
Right.
With kids out there.
The one thing we will increase, though, is the cost to run the, we'll have to run sewer. We do not have sewer there, the sewer ends where the manufactured home park is. So we would have to extend sewer down to there for a park, so that would add to the cost.
Just to be clear on the logistics timeline, so we would then approve something on March 28th, two weeks from today, and that's enough time between the 28th and the deadline of April 1st for you guys to get it submitted?
If we don't make very many changes, yes.
Okay, well, so, yeah, that's what I'm trying to clarify, do we, so do we, do you want to work, we're going to come up with whatever the plan is between now and the 28th, and then we approve the 28th and you submit it? Or do you want us to approve something now? What would be better for the process?
For right now, so we'll have to do the resolution, it's required by the grant to be submitted. It's part of an, it's part of one of the attachments that has to be submitted to them. So I will come back on the 28th with that resolution with, for you. If I'm able to get some different numbers in that time that maybe shows what a restroom will be, I can, we can present that first before the resolution, so if there's something that we need to change, and if I can keep the budget numbers the same, but change the, the, just the different things within the grant, then the, but the resolution wouldn't have to change as far as how much the grant is and how much the match is. So that would really be the, the, I guess, the, to make sure we keep those dollar numbers the same. The good part about this grant is because we did submit last year and were unsuccessful, I can reuse a lot of the attachments because they're maps and things like that, that we create and show, you know, the park's going to be built here, and it's this far away from, from the public, and just different things like that. So there's a lot of things that I'm able to reuse which saves time. What usually takes uptime is getting the, you know, getting our budget narrowed down, and I have to get letters of support from the public, and then also just the putting budgets together and things like that. So I, it's doable, and I can see if we can work a restroom and rearrange some of the stuff. Maybe we take out the playtote area, you know, that was, I think, in the, in the newer budget, they were looking at anywhere from 30 to 60,000 for playground equipment, so.
Can I ask this, would it be helpful if there, if there's any councillors willing to volunteer to help partner with you in the thought process over the next couple of weeks? Would that be helpful, or would that just be another aspect to manage? You can be honest.
So, I'll spill it out here for you real quick. So I go on vacation next week, and I'll be gone for a week. So I'll be here the last week of March for, and so that's kind of where I'm at. But I do have somebody helping me with this grant, so, to help get that together. I guess as far as getting things lined out, it would just be, okay, do we want to take away some of the things that were like the picnic shelters and maybe the play area and some of that stuff, and replace it with a bathroom and see what that costs?
I would ask you, you, this is an open spaces grant, you know the grant committee, what do they want to see? Because every grant committee wants to see something different, so fill us in on that.
So they're going to ask me where the restroom is, because they always do. It's just one of their things, you know, or, you know, like you said, parking, things like that. Sometimes I think it just depends on the grant committee, Jennifer. You could have the same people doing the same thing, and they like somebody's better than the other ones. So they will ask what our plan is for the restrooms, and what we would probably tell them is for the first year that we would provide porta-potties and then reapply for a sec, a grant in the coming cycle for the restroom. So that would be our answer to them, you're asking, that would be my answer to them. Whether or not they think that is suitable or not, it's hard to say. Or if we go the other way and say, we're going to spend all our money on some grass and a restroom, then they're going to say, well, what kind of amenities are you going to provide? So.
I guess my, my, my hope would be that we maybe get rid of the toddler structure, try to get a bathroom in there, and see about looking at that dog park for some natural space and cut cost on the irrigation. Then we're giving the community the dog park, we're giving the community the restroom, and we're keeping that, that picnic area, because I know that's one of the things that the community's asked for, is picnic shelters and covered spaces.
Okay, I can look into it, and if I can keep the budget the same, then I will. And if I run into a snag, I'll reach out, does that work?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I believe there's a request for a motion. I make a motion that the council approve Public Works to move forward with the submission of the local government grant application for Hoffman Park.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Steve Plakes not here yet, so we'll move on to number seven, appointment of interim city administrator, Charo.
Thank you very much, hold on one moment, Mayor, while I catch up on our screen share. Okay, and before I pull that up, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Kristy Worster. Kristy is on the screen here, and Kristy, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Welcome, Kristy.
There you are.
Hi, good evening, everyone, good to see you. Do you want me to go ahead and introduce myself? It's just an honor to be considered as your pro temp manager. I look forward to starting work next week if you approve the employment agreement, that is. Just a little bit of background about me, I've worked in local government since 1995, when I began my career working for the city of Dallas, Oregon. And I worked in the community development, public works, and fire department at that time, and I worked up through progressively responsible positions until I ultimately got my first city manager job. And I've been enjoying local government ever since, and it's just an honor to be a part of your community and look forward to getting to know all of you and, and working with your staff to make the community thrive and help you secure your more permanent administrator.
Thank you, Kristy. Kristy is able to start work with us on the 20th, which is Monday. She's able to be in the office here five days a week. She is, she is, I think she has the most experience from the people that we were speaking to, and has the leadership and the guidance, and Mayor has also spoken with Kristy, and I think that together, I believe also Gabriel and Mike.
She was even highly spoken of, of, by her competition.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely, competition was like, you've made a good decision, so. Council, do you have any questions for Kristy that are specific?
I'm just, I mean, I appreciate the history, is this, what timeframe are we looking at here? And are you looking to be pro temp only, or are you also interested in the long term? Or can I ask that?
Well, I'm transitioning to retirement, my husband and I have moved back to our family farm in the valley where we grow hazelnuts, and so I'm only doing interim work. The time period for this contract would be up to six months while we assist the community in securing your next manager. We would have discussions with you about whether or not that would be, you know, an in-house process using Charo and my skill sets, or whether we would actually go out and find a professional recruiter to do that. I have served as a pro temp or interim manager for several communities, most of them are the size of Madras or larger, and have really enjoyed that as I transitioned to retirement. It's, once you've been a city manager, it's not something that is easily given up. You're going miles an hour every day, and then to all of a sudden- You're going miles an hour every day and then to all of a sudden, you know, not have that responsibility is just really hard to do. So I've continued to do, uh, pro temp work as the availability arises. So I, I hope that's answered your question.
It does. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Kristy?
I appreciate you being willing to do this, uh, such short notice. So thank you.
You bet. I'm going to be out of town for the next few days, so I'm actually starting to pack today.
I think people are getting tired of seeing me in this office here, so your presence would be very welcome for me.
Yeah.
To clarify, Charo, Lisa, do we need to do anything to pull pro temp status from the mayor so that we can appoint Kristy?
Do you need to fire me so you can hire her?
Do we need to fire?
Do we need to fire the mayor? Can we do that? I don't know if we have the legal power.
Can I just resign, starting that day?
Yeah. So we were, I did, was, did not receive direction specifically that we needed to have a specific resignation, but we'll get, gain clarification, um, from Jeremy on that, um, when we wrap up the final draft and signatures on the, um, on the agreement for Kristy, so.
And Mayor or Pro Temp?
Yes.
You may want some days of crossover here too.
I do plan on being here that Monday when she starts to help transfer things over and probably Tuesday as well. So, extend my vacation.
Just a little bit.
Is it a vacation?
Well, it's a different scene.
I think we made your two-week goal.
I've been having my margaritas at night.
That's right. I, I do think we made that goal, so. No, we do just need the, um, the motion to be able to get things in motion.
Yeah, I'll give the motion. That council appoint Kristy Worster as the interim city administrator beginning March 20th, 2023 and authorize the HR director and city attorney to finalize the agreement to retain her services.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to thank Kristy for her willingness to, uh, come and assist us. Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to meeting you all.
We all thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Kristy, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Kristy.
Thank you, everyone. I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you. You too.
Hey, the code detective update. Um, I think I've stated to most of the counselors already, I have kind of feel bad because I've given some faulty information regarding the HIDA grant, um, as far as what it pays for. So once the sheriff's able to get the HIDA grant, it does not pay for an FTE, pays for overtime, equipment, that sort of thing. Because of my long history with the sheriff's office, I'm going to recuse myself in this conversation. I've asked Tim Plummer, who is our soon-to-be interim, uh, police director, to please step in and weigh in on this conversation and give you some more guidance. Tim, are you on board?
Yes, sir. With me one moment.
Good. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you, Tim.
Oh, good. Um, I wanted to, um, give, uh, first of all, say, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to, uh, share with you this document. Um, I was given some statistical information from the sheriff's office about, um, calls for service for 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022. As you can see there on the chart, uh, to the left side are the total numbers of calls for service. Across the top are just four data points for collection. This doesn't cover all the calls for service. These are broken down by burglary, drug calls for service, theft, and assaults. Then over the far right side, that total column shows the total number of calls for those four event types. On the right side, and the percentage of, um, what that makes up for total calls of service. Um, I, if, there needs to be, I, I want to be able to present a, a document, Charo, if you can for a minute, for, for contrast and comparison, if, if you're able to do that, but, um.
Is that the right one?
Um, well, I, I wanted to have the other black and white one, but why don't you scroll back up to the other one first and we'll go over what's on that. The top one reflects the Josephine County Sheriff's Office calls for service for those designated periods of time. The bottom one is Madras PD for the same, uh, period of time. The percentages that you see along the bottom represent the total in comparison to that number in bold to the left. So the total drug calls for service for the sheriff's office, uh, that 48,379, their calls for service for drug calls was point zero seven percent of their workload. Uh, for the city of Madras, um, for the 49,480, uh, 95 calls for service, that equates to, uh, 0.19% of the call load for that four-year period. So I wanted to put that in perspective for you to take a look at that. The four comparables that were sent over from the county about what the call load looked like. And so we're talking, and we're talking one tenth, almost, well, two tenths of a percent of the total call log that comes in or call volume that comes in for the city of Madras for drug activity. And there's some other things that I had Steve Webb pull up for us that I don't have in front of you, but I can just read them off to you. Uh, he pulled the caseloads from Madras PD that they have from 2020 through March 10th of 2023. And the call loads that had a, a designator that there was drugs involved or had an attachment to the type of call. So it could have been a bird call, it could have been an assault call, it could have been a domestic call, but the FBI, FBI data collection requires you to be able to put in there a marker if drugs were involved. So of those cases that he was handling or pushed through Madras PD, uh, they equated to point zero three five percent of the cases he was dealing with. So I wanted the, the folks on the council for you to look at that and, and, um, and then have that informed information, uh, based on whether or not, um, you want to consider the consideration of, uh, the code enforcement officer. So as I look for that and, and have you look at it, then now you have an informed, a formed array of some statistics. I mean, if I were to look at it, I would say that assault and theft are probably our biggest challenges out of that four category of data points that was pulled and, and provided to us. So I'm, I'm willing to entertain some questions that you might have on this, but again, this is data that was provided to me. So here's some bar graphs. It separates or it shows, uh, those four data points side by side, blue, uh, being Madras, green being the county, and then it breaks them out in their own separate respective bar graphs, uh, for a visual comparison. So, thank you.
Tim, this is Gabriel Solis. Do you know, and this might even be a question for the county, what the definition of drugs is in this case? Are these including alcohol and marijuana and just a broad spectrum? Or is this specific to the issues that Sheriff Pollock brought forth regarding fentanyl?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that depending on where they pulled these data, uh, points from and, and how they're marked in their reporting system, because domestic violence, uh, sometime, it, I don't know if they've changed it, but domestic violence involving alcohol, uh, there was a checkbox for drugs or alcohol or just drugs. Or if it was a traffic stop or if somebody was patted down when they were being taken in custody for a warrant and they were found to have, you know, a gram of cocaine in their pocket. So as I was reading just some data that I got today, I was reading some of the case files, uh, a number of the cases in 2020, 2021 were like that. The drug charge was not the only charge. The judge, the, the charge looks like it was part of the whole criminal investigation that went on, but I'd have to do a deeper dive, but that's a great question as to, I think the FBI data can break it out, but I don't know that it's, I, I, I didn't prepare this data, so I'm not sure what data points they're using when they're qualifying cases that, um, associated with drug use or drug possession.
Thank you.
If there's drugs involved in the theft or the assault, is it, how does it get categorized? Because you kind of have all of the things going on in the same situation.
You're right. And, um, and that's kind of a conversation that we have. As a result of ballot measure 10, uh, you can be in possession up to less than two grams of coke, meth, uh, some MDMA, and it's a citation, it's a hundred dollar fine. So I, and that's the other thing that's the question about these drug cases. Are they that kind of a case? Or are we talking a 40,000, um, pills of fentanyl, two kilos of cocaine? Uh, because the data I have doesn't separate how, what that is, um, what they actually point to. So that's also a good question as well.
I would guess, taking your years of experience with OSP and not really knowing what data that we're looking at and say, what is your thought on, not the data in front of you, but on the discussion that we're having as far as a narcotics officer, code detective, the whole situation?
I'm saying, given, I mean, I've, I've read the news article, seen the news releases about the quantities of, of fentanyl being found on the highways out in that area, in, in our area. And, um, these don't lend themselves to that. They lend themselves to if you go to a call of a disturbance or you find somebody with a warrant or you arrest them for DUII, they end up with this stuff in their possessions. There are some, however, I looked through the disposition on some of the cases from the district attorney's office between 2020 and 2021. Some of them are for actually manufacturing or delivering. Now, when you see those charges of manufacturing and delivery, that means it has to reach another criteria as opposed to just simple possession or personal use amount. Now, those were of a minority, so I didn't actually go out and quantify them yet. I hadn't had a chance to really sit down and crunch on those numbers a little bit. But, um, really the purpose of, of these two graphs that I wanted to give you was that, that the resources that the city is considering, you know, for this proposal. Um, this is what your call load is as far as the case is concerned in the city of Madras as far as drug cases. So, uh, and, and generally, traditionally, an inter-agency or regional drug team, those teams' objective is to go after the big players who are bringing quantities in, who are actually selling it in the communities, who are distributing in the communities. So I would like to, I'd have to actually go through and just look at the case files themselves, uh, for some of these cases to make, to really answer that question. But based on what I would say, because I had some experience doing interdiction on I-5, where we did get quantities of drugs and quantities of, uh, of, uh, money, I made far more arrests for people with individual amounts than I did, you know, saying six kilos of heroin and six kilos of methamphetamine in a single traffic stop. If that helps.
Thank you for the analysis, uh, Tim. I think for me, I'm having trouble with the framing of the call disposition type being the way to look at it. Um, I feel like this data, like our, our, our information's only good as our data capture. This is only capturing the tip of an iceberg. I think a lot of the thefts are probably drug caused. People are trying to, you know, get money to buy more drugs, they break into your house, you call the police and report a theft. It was a drug crime, but that wasn't captured in the data. I'm sure some of these assaults are related to, you know, drug deals or people high on drugs, out of control. For that reason, I feel like intuitively, I, I, it also sticks with me, uh, the OSP gentleman that said that, you know, our county, our area is the only one that really didn't have a code officer. So we're perfectly positioned relative to Portland and Central Oregon, and we don't really have anybody doing this, to me is a perfect storm. So I still support doing this. I would go in with the county for the three years at the 50% and, uh, move forward with our plan to get the code officer.
Mr. Plummer, I have a question for you. So with, with your experience and things, if we implemented a code officer like this, would you suspect that you'd see these call volumes decrease?
Well, first of all, I, and I would answer this by saying simply this, I don't know the makeup of the code team. Uh, it's titled Central Oregon Drug Enforcement. Does that include Crook County, Deschutes County, and Jefferson County?
Yes.
And if so, okay, how many other contributors are on the team from other agencies aside from the big players like Bend or Redmond and the county? So, um, and then how much time would, um, that, that 50% salary buy the citizens of Madras for looking into these big cases? Those ought to be the question I would ask.
Okay, thanks.
Tim, from what I'm understanding is that Jefferson County is the only agency that's not participating in code in the, in the tri-county area.
Thank you.
My opinion is we do need to do this eventually, but I think we need to do some rebuilding for a few months with Tim and get our officers in, um, that we already have and, and I think we need to do it, but I think we need to, that one little hurdle to get over, uh, I think it'd be good for our officers, uh, for their, uh, attitude, help them get their feet on the ground, because right now they're slipping around on ice, not knowing kind of what they're doing. I just think, just delay it a little bit, let those guys get settled in and then, and then we can revisit this, because I think we need it, but we're in a transitional period, which if we trans, transition too much at once, we're, we're going to have problems that, uh, may not be reversible.
I would respectfully disagree. I, I definitely hear where you're coming from and I have concerns about, um, police morale as well. My viewpoint is that we fund everything. Uh, you know, we do the school resource officer, we do this code, um, officer, uh, we do, uh, we figure out a way to help backstop our detective backlog, uh, that Detective Sergeant Steve Webb's dealing with. We do the inventory control specialist. I want to do all of them, um, at the same time. And I think that if the police realizes that we are prioritizing our resources on the vital function they provide to our community of maintaining law and order, um, that, that in itself, a, a perceived shift of culture will improve their morale. Candidly, I don't really see what is gained by waiting a few months. I think we should enter into disagreement with the county. I think we should do it as expeditiously as possible.
Can Tim be involved with the IGA if we set this up, even though he doesn't officially start till the end of the month?
You can, um, the county and the city can consult on gaining information from wherever you want.
I guess my input is I know that this community needs it, how it's structured and how it's policed as far as the time spent within the city and the county. We need to participate in the bigger cause here, which is funding this. But we would, I would think that we want Mr. Plummer's input on how we set this up to ensure that we're protecting our entity as well as the citizens of the community.
I mean, is that not something the lawyer can help us with? I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Um, I don't know. Are we voting on moving for, this isn't a voting situation, is it? We're just, just having a discussion? Okay.
It's a discussion because right now we don't have a final draft. Counselor Solis?
Of course. I think that Jennifer's right. I think I would love to involve Mr. Plummer in this when he comes on as the director for us, our interim director. I think that is going to be key for our department. Uh, just looking at the draft IGA, um, not necessarily a fan of the requirement of the 90-day notice, only if we appoint an FTE officer to be assigned to code, although I'd love the city to have one dedicated for us. I also don't necessarily like the automatic renewal. I think that that should come back to us for ongoing conversation. I think the automatic renewal gives it the opportunity to pass under the I think the automatic renewal gives it the opportunity to pass under the radar and maybe just continue on without us actually paying attention to whether this will be continuing to serve our citizens moving forward into the future years. So I think my direction would be to continue, and I think we do need to fund this, but I think those conversations are still ongoing. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Counselor Yoder?
I'd like to see us go ahead with this and get it, get things moving ahead, because I think it's important that we have some type of drug enforcement, more drug enforcement than what we have right now. I also think, and I don't know, maybe this is speaking out of term, but there's other cities here also, maybe they could put in a little bit of money here and there. Maybe not this time, but maybe next year. You know, I think if, if we're all involved in Jefferson County, I think it could make a better, a better group effort, I would say. And of course, Culver or Metoius is not going to put in near what we do, but at least they could have it on their agenda and their citizens would know that we're, you know, working towards something or that they're working towards something also, and they're involved in this code enforcement. And it might detour people that want to have a stash house or something like that in some of these outerlying cities besides Madras. And maybe we'll make a little bit of a name for ourselves and kind of push people away. That's my opinion.
I want to piggyback off that. That's actually a really good point, that we should be looking at partnering with all possible agencies. Maybe Commissioner Similink or Administrator Rasmussen could speak to whether those conversations have been had with Culver and Metoius, if they would be interested in looking at that, or if we're just wasting our time.
Jeff Rasmussen, County Administrative Officer. The sheriff's not able to be here. He's in training. I always don't want to speak on his behalf, but I would just point out that we have a contract for services for Culver and Metoius. And so part of their, their in, in with, with us. We have a, I think, a five-year agreement with them. So I'd have to ask the sheriff if that's something that they would be, we would want to already kind of try and reopen. It does have an escalator built into it.
Thank you.
Counselors, I think if you're inputting this, can I ask if there's consensus to have Tim Plummer speak as an advisor to this, also with Jeremy, to work, work on the IGA with the county?
Yes.
Yes, as long as Mr. Plummer is willing to do that. I know he hasn't started with us officially yet, so as long as he's willing, yes.
I am, thank you.
Yes, I, I agree also.
Gary?
I think we're pushing the cart off the cliff too soon, but, you know, I'm only one person.
Thank you, counselors. Mr. Plummer, thank you for your support in this. Any other questions on that or discussion? Jeff, would you pass that on to the sheriff, please? Thank you. Okay, back to item number six. Chief Blake, welcome. You're up for the Code Enforcement Services discussion.
I'm going to start, actually.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then we'll turn it over to Chief Blake. So in your packet, actually, are a list of items that we discussed in your strategic planning meeting back in November. They include code enforcement that is not the drug enforcement officer, but related to items like the Beverly Street House and garbage removal, community cleanup, that type of thing, okay? That was one of the items that were brought up. The other item was food carts, transportation funding options, body cameras, affordable housing, increasing partnerships with the county, and identifying on the staff reports which strategic plan goal was being moved forward. So I bring those to your attention because since it's budget season, I need to make sure that the items that we've identified, I've either captured in the budget before it goes to Budget Committee, or if we need to add any, I need direction on that. So the first one, the code enforcement, is actually a project that we've been working on because Jeff Blake, sorry, Chief Blake. He, he had a meeting here, and then we stayed and visited after his meeting one night, and he said, hey, what about a partnership between the fire district and the city? Can we find a way to do code enforcement? Because we share a lot of the same customers, and there's got to be a way. So hence, we started our conversation. So I'll turn it over to him in just a second, but before you is a draft RFP. So the goal this evening is threefold. I need you to look at the list before you. Make sure that those are the items that you want me to move forward with, with the budget. And in this specific item, the code enforcement, we have currently added it to the Community Cleanup Fund so that we could share the costs. So it is drafted currently, and I can leave it in if you'd prefer. And then we need to confirm that we want to move forward with the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, between the fire department and the city. And also move forward with the RFP that we need to put out. So I'll turn it over to Chief Blake for the, the goal.
Do you guys have any specific questions on what Crystal just said? It might help a little bit. You know, we, I came to her, we talked about it a lot. And when you look at a code enforcement position in the fire department, you look at a code enforcement position in the city, they're really kind of doing the same things. And so it's, to me, it makes sense to partner this, rather than have two separate full-time people working kind of the same stuff. When you look at the top four or five things that we have to deal with is fuels mitigation, weed abatement, access egress issues, nuisance, attractive nuisance properties, and derelict properties. And so those are kind of the five main things that present life safety and public safety type hazards that I feel like a partnership that works with the fire department, works with the city, and then we've already had the conversations within the county with their code enforcement officer on not joining forces, but at least striving to work together in that and develop the policies to, to work together so that, you know, when I look at Madras, I look at a vibrant, responsive community, but there's, needs to be some cleanup that needs to get done around here in a few places. And that's why, you know, I'm known as the goat man now, because we're bringing goats tomorrow. But that's kind of, you know, and this is all part of one big thing, to, to make our community more fire safe, to make our community more livable and viable and, you know, and have a strong partnership with each other. And so that's what we're hoping to gain with this. As far as the, you know, we've talked a little bit about what this MOU would look like. We're still quite a ways away. My board just, I just came from my board meeting, that's why I was a little late, so thank you. But they are, in concept, very supportive of this idea moving forward. So unless, if there's any other specific questions I can give you, I think we're going to provide the vehicle and pay part of the salary. And then the city was planning on providing the office space and part of the salary. I think that we pretty much agreed that it would be managed. Day-to-day management would be done by the community development person, thank you. And then, you know, strategic management would be a combination between he and I and, and my office. Anything else that I can give you or answer any questions?
Is there a partnership with the county as well, or is this just the city and the fire department?
So this is just, this particular position would be just the city and the fire department. Where, where we've agreed to is to have a cooperative working relationship between the code, the two code enforcement officers with the county and the city-fire department combination. And, and that way, they can backstop each other, provide certain amount of backup and, and experience there. So, you know, I, there's, we have to, it would be tougher to do with the county, because we have the county issue, issues that they're dealing with. We have the UGB issues, and then we have the city issues. And so one of the things that we need to do as a fire department, which we're moving forward on, is, is adopting a weed abatement and an ordinance for the urban growth boundary and other areas within my fire district. When you look at the county's current ordinance, it, it addresses, addresses noxious weeds, but there's still some work that we have to do on, on fuels mitigation and weed abatement type things for traditional grass weeds and those types of things. So we're, we're working with them, trying to get, we will be trying to get all of our ordinances to meet. And my ordinance will meet very similar or look very similar to yours. It won't include everything that yours has in it, but it will pretty much have the same language as far as the fuels mitigation, access egress, and derelict properties and that kind of stuff.
I'm in support of this. I think we should definitely move forward on this path. I think it would be beneficial for the city. If we can roll it out quick, too, we might be competing directly with the county to fill the position, because I know their position will be.
And that came up, absolutely. And we're looking at, do you? We're looking at this position in the first year, and I think Crystal covered it. Would be a contracted position, not a full-time employee at this point. We want to prove this system out first before we commit that far.
Are the goats contracted, too?
The goats are contracted, too. You know, I'm getting a hundred and fifty goats to chew down a bunch of grass that would probably cost us about twenty-five thousand dollars in manpower to do the same amount of work. So it'll work.
I support this as well. I think it's a good plan.
I just wanted to say thank you to Michelle for all the work that she did. There's times where she is like, she, you know, did a lot of the admin work behind the scenes, and we, we couldn't have done it without her.
I, I agree. We've kind of overloaded her with, between the goats and the RFP and the job description. So thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. So I have permission to move forward with legal to draft the MOU, and we'll put the RFP out once legal reviews that. A nuisance ordinance will also come before you to review, because there are some modifications that the community development director has identified in order to make this seamless, I suppose. So that, that's those pieces. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. And thank you for being patient while we figure out a way, you know, without a work session, to like have a conversation so we can move forward. So thanks for that. And then the items on the list before you. The food carts, that has to do with regulations. Nick would lead that charge. We do need to update those. Originally, we talked about transportation funding options, whether it was the prepared food tax or the gas tax, and how or when we want to consider that. We talked about November or May of next year. There is money set aside in the Transportation Operations Fund for additional professional services, because we're going to need some support to update those analysis documents. Body cameras, we're doing two things. We've budgeted for it this current year. You may remember we had a budget resolution to take care of that last time. And then there's also a grant that's due in the next couple of weeks that we're working on. So maybe we would even get grant dollars available for the body cameras. So when Mr. Plummer comes on, I'm sure he'll give me some help with that project. Affordable housing, that's also a Nick project. I think all of this working together with code enforcement, drug team and that, that's talking about the partnerships with the county. And is there anything else that you would like us to focus on in the budget? Just because I have to make sure that it's in the draft.
I guess we're still kind of in the process of our strategic planning and finalizing that, so there will be changes that come from that. So is this kind of a working draft, then?
The, the budget is, I'm sorry, what's the question?
This list that you gave us.
Yes, uh-huh. This is just what I captured in November. I didn't, I don't have access to anything else, so.
I think that these projects will continue to move forward. There might be some additions and some other things that we as council in our strategic planning will want to kind of add to this. But I don't think that we want to necessarily stop any of these projects. So I say with that, I would say move forward.
Okay, that's great.
And we'll add that these bullet points here are, are actually included in the, the draft that we do have, so. Any other discussion? Crystal, chief, thank you. Any other discussion before we move on to reports? If none, for police, Mr. Plummer, do you have anything you'd like to add tonight for law enforcement? Other than they're excited to be here.
I'm, I'm grateful to be able to be part of this, and I don't really have anything new to give. I'm looking at, excited about getting a deep dive into the code and code officer and learning more about how that process is going to play out and work. And what I mostly appreciate is the support that has been shared during this forum about the agency and, and the exciting enthusiasm about getting everybody on their feet and up and going and moving in a good direction for the folks here in Madras.
Thank you. Finance, Crystal?
Thank you very much. Mostly thank you for bearing with us as we attempted to do things a little bit differently and bring things before you as a discussion, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Crystal. Nick's not here tonight for community development. Is there anybody else that you can fill in there? No? Public Works, Mike?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Quick few updates. First thing is FBO proposals are due tomorrow, so we'll start reviewing those. And then also, we have the warming shelter, which is due again next Wednesday. So we'll see how those bids come in. And the last thing I've got really is CIP development. So I know we've been talking about it. Crystal and I have been working on this, and so what we're going to do is continue working on it, bring it to council. This will not get implemented this year. We're just, we're not able to do that. We're still working on master plans, so this is something that would be great if we could bring to you in a work session so we make sure we get this worked out properly for the next five years. Other than that, that's it, and, you know, Michelle's got to herd goats tomorrow.
Thank you, Mike. Michelle? Really? Okay. Human Resources, Charles?
We have on Friday, just a reminder, we have our Small Cities Lunch that we will be hosting here. And I believe we have a couple of counselors. We have Gabriel, we have Mike Gilby joining us, right? And Lamar, are you not joining us?
No, unfortunately, I already had a meeting set up for quite a while.
Okay.
Exactly on that time.
Okay, and I know, Gary, you worked during the day. Okay, and then we do have some staff that'll be joining us for that time, and.
I can probably make that if you.
Do you want to?
Sure.
Okay, I will make sure that you're involved there. We will be in council chambers that day, so we will have plenty of space. And outside of that, that does start at eleven. Outside of that, I am, as long as nothing major happens this week, because we've had lots of exciting, busy weeks, I am hoping to get our, finally get our city recorder position posted by the end of this week. So you can look forward to seeing that. Outside of that, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Charles. I'm grateful that so many counselors are going to be here Friday. I'm, that is, happens to be St. Patrick's Day, and my band is playing most of that day. And I'll be either playing drums or drinking beer, so thank you for filling in for me. No, no, I'm drinking good beer, so. For city administrator, it's pro-Tim until Monday. I'd like to update you on some things. This has been a very educational experience for me. Michelle, in fact, asked me once at a meeting, Public Works, if my view is different. Michelle, it is very different. I would say a lot of the issues that we struggle with or have struggled with evolves around the lack of communication. I spoke to some of the counselors already about this and things that we need to do to overcome that and improve the services we're providing to each other and to our community. First thing is, as you may have realized, our work sessions we've had in the past have been very few. We need to step that up. There's a lot of questions. There's a lot of questions from the staff that have, as far as what direction the council wants them to go. There's some things, there are projects that are coming up that I think the council would benefit from knowing about in a less formal situation where we can talk more freely about it before the council sessions. So when we do bring those up, it's easier to make those decisions. It is the desire of the staff and myself that we have work session before each council meeting for the least next four to six months. So we can get on board with the projects that are coming, figure out how to proceed with those, have a better understanding of those things that are happening. And then after that, we can reduce that to maybe one, once a month. I don't want to see that less than that. That way we don't lose touch with what's happening. This also is a great way to build that relationship of trust between ourselves and that staff. So we understand why they're asking for certain things and telling us why this will work and that won't work. So if you're all in agreement to that, I think we should plan those here in the future.
Did you have dates in mind for work sessions? Are you thinking?
I'm, I'm thinking what would work best because I don't want to eat up everybody's evenings. I think like if we can meet during the lunch, lunch hour. I know Wonder Woman over there would really like it if we did it on Mondays. So
Monday the week prior to council or the Monday right before council?
I'm thinking the Monday the week before. Is that?
Yeah. Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me. I support the initiative. The more communication, the better.
Counselor Holcomb.
Mondays and Fridays are the only two days that I have, so I would hope that we could do it Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, Monday's good for me.
Counselor Walker? You're on for the ride.
Long for the ride.
Thank you. The other thing I would like to bring up is all the counselors are assigned to different committees or commissions that we rarely hear about or was happening. I would like it in the future when you give your roundtable report to report on any things that are happening in the commission you're assigned to. So I know there's minutes that are posted, but I think it's seldom that people find those or read those. So if there's some kind of key issues that come up, I think that's a great place to bring those up. That's all I have. Thank you. So unless anybody has any questions, would I ask? City Recorder, Lisa.
I just need council's clothing order. That seems pretty easy, right? I have a few of them, but some of them you need to turn your forms in to me so I can get that out. Hopefully, the end of this week, would that be enough time? Okay? That's about it.
Thank you. Legal Counsel, Destin, are you on?
I am on and noting to report from our office, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Holcomb.
I just want to thank everybody. Christie for coming on, Tim Plummer for coming on. I know this is some challenging times and we're not a difficult council. We just want to be informed. So we're working with you guys as you work with us. And I really appreciate the efforts that are being shown by you guys and staff.
See you, Bob.
I want to thank you, Mayor, for stepping in and being the pro tem for us over these couple of weeks. You took one for the team and used a lot of your vacation time, so that was very magnanimous of you. So I want to thank you for that. Thank you, Christie, for stepping in at short notice and kind of parachuting in and rescuing us. So thank you for that. And thank you, Tim. We're very excited to work with you in the future. Michelle, enjoy your vacation. You mentioned you were going on vacation, so have a good time. Get away from all this and forget about the city and just have fun. I will be there on Friday for the Small City Meeting. I'll be honest, it was difficult to say yes because that is the first weekend of March Madness. So I am taking one for the team. That actually hurt my heart a little bit, but I will be there. But I might be looking at my phone the whole time. And that is it.
Thank you. Counselor Solis?
I will take your phone away at that meeting so that you're involved and engaged. No, when I echo what both of them said, and Christie, thank you for coming on. We look forward to working with you. Thank you, Tim, as well. Look forward to working with you moving forward. Again, thank you, Mayor. I know that it was a lot of work. You've learned a lot and you're probably more excited than anyone to have Christie come on. Say the least. So appreciate all your work. Really excited for additional work sessions. I think that we really just want to learn as council. We, you guys are the experts. You know your day-to-day and we don't. So getting the opportunity to learn and to work with you and build those relationships is very exciting. And the one other thing is I may be out of town for our next council meeting. Possibly going to be going on a little vacation myself. So I will attend via Zoom if I do end up out of town.
Thank you. Counselor Spencer is out of country and I think she was unable to check in. Is that correct? Counselor Yoder.
I'd also like to say thank you to all of you. I know there's a lot of effort that's put into the things that have been going on. But I don't have anything to report, but thank you and hope you all have a great evening. Thanks to the community for showing up and being here. Your presence also, it's appreciated.
Counselor Walker.
Thank you, staff. Thank you for working in the presence of, of people you're looking up to. Thank you, Mayor, for stepping in there and Christie and Tim. And as you guys move on, thank you, Michelle and Crystal and all of you, Mike, all you guys for working and continuing to move forward. We appreciate that. We appreciate the partnerships that we have and we look forward to those with the county and sheriff and, and fire department that will help our community look better and be safer. And that's the only reason that we're here is to help Madras thrive. And we appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other further discussion? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting tonight at 7:07.